Roundabout figures. If they're gonna tear that building down for a million five and throw it away and build a hotel or build a grocery store or build a restaurant, anything on that piece of property, the property is not valued at 2.2 million dollars or 2.1 million dollars. What is the land value? What is the building value? Because once you take the building off, all you have left is the land. And they can't build a hotel and they can't build a restaurant in that building unless they do extensive remodel or take it down. So what are we actually getting when the city does the land swap if they take over the Rye Furniture property as a swap?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Frank Fletcher. I'm proud to say that I've lived here in North Little Rock for 47 years. As most of you know, I'm the owner of the Wyndham Hotel. I'm here tonight to ask the council members to not commit our city to buying or swapping for the Rye property and the future of multi-million dollar expense to build a parking deck. I know that you're only voting on a land swap tonight. Ladies and gentlemen, this is all tied to a project of possibly building a hotel. And I welcome hotels. There's been several new ones in North Little Rock this year. What I do not like and ask you to not vote for is at some point in time, we will be voting for a city-paid-for parking deck. My question is this: why now? The TIF legislation is in the court. It has been in the court. It may be in the court for a long period of time. If the TIF does not pass the court, how will the city and the taxpayer money pay for a parking deck? There's been articles that there will never be any city money or taxpayer's money to buy and pay for this tech, for this parking deck. I believe that that is untrue. I would like to ask you to consider that we're in bad economic times. And sooner or later, the taxpayers from North Little Rock will want answers to why the city is going to spend money to help a private developer. These people are good business people. They're talking about building a 28 or 30 million dollar project. If they have the money to do that, and I'm sure they do, why can they not pay for their own parking as I have had to and other businesses have had to? Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Microphone's still open.
I'm Donna Hardcastle. I'm here to speak in favor of the land swap. I have lots of history in North Little Rock. I've worked on the board of the Argenta Community Development Corporation, the North Little Rock Chamber. I'm associated with the Altel Arena. I'm currently employed by the Argenta Downtown Council, although I'm not speaking for that board. My interest here is that I have spent my whole life in North Little Rock, and I would like to see our downtown redeveloped. And I believe that we have an opportunity with the swap, with the developers that are stepping forward, to see that redevelopment occur. And I would encourage the city council members to vote in favor based on that development. We need our downtown finished, and we've got a lot of work to do. But I think it can be done, and that this swap will help see that that gets started. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and members of the city council, my name is Sam Hillburn. I'm attorney here in North Little Rock. I had addressed the council previously about the Argenta Plan, and I had reservations about the Argenta Plan. At that time, it was stated here before this council that the two, the Argenta Plan and this particular development were not in any way connected. But if you will read, that in essence, the swap is in compliance with the Argenta Plan. So you had to have the Argenta Plan in place before you could justify the swap. Now, that's okay, and that's fine and good. I think it's very premature if you're counting on the TIF financing to build a parking deck. There's no way you can build a 26 or 30 million dollar hotel without parking on that particular site. You've got to have parking. And if it's anticipated that there's a deck to be built, and this particular financing is to take care of it, a large segment of that financing is dependent upon the TIF. That is in litigation. For you to approve the exchange of properties at this stage, I think it's premature. Because if you lose the litigation, then you've lost the TIF financing, which is the primary vehicle to construct your parking deck. So then it all falls because you have no parking. And I just think it's premature until this litigation is resolved and a determination is made by the courts as to whether you're going to have financing available to build a parking deck. It's like going out and building a house and not having a loan to pay for your house or pay your contractor. That's in essence what you're confronted with. You need that issue resolved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Members of the city council, I'm Don Chambers. I'm the, I'm employed as the general manager of the Argenta Downtown Council, but I'm not speaking for them. I've been involved in North Little Rock for some time. I remember shopping at Mechanics Lumber, and I remember when it burned down. And I thought, you know, city buying that land, my goodness, you know, that's a great idea, but, you know, why? Well, come to find out, it was a great investment. Probably gonna make about three times what you bought it for on it. I see not so much parking deck. That's a what-if. Who knows? Maybe one day. But the important part is the other pieces of land, the parts along Main Street, Sixth Street, all the way up to Seventh and down Bishop Lindsey. And to fill in those missing teeth of downtown with great economic development and really wonderful shops and businesses is really what I look forward to. I was called to water all my plants and flowers downtown today and drove past that site and went, wow, this could be really great when it all fills in. And then I thought, damn, I'll have to water all those plants too. Thank you. I urge you to vote for this one.
Microphones open.
My name is Kenny Wallace. I'm a member of Secure Arkansas. I'm here to speak against Ordinance 10-69, the Sustainable Development Design Standards Ordinance. First off, I had to comment about the census. I only gave, which, I only gave a number of persons and households, which was the intent of it when it was first written, and that's all I will ever give. I also noticed that there was a sign in Spanish. I trust that no illegal aliens are part of this census account. Speaking of the Constitution, folks, do you remember reading in the Constitution that if you wanted to build a house, or a church, or a business in the United States, you must first get the permission of the unelected United States Green Building Council? Well, you may not remember that because it's not there. Ordinance 10-69, Sustainable Development Design Standards, would not only require city buildings to be green compliant, but it would allow the city council to encourage green compliance in the private sector. This current green agenda that we hear about is based upon the lie of man-made global warming. Now, the Climate Gate emails that came out last year showed that man-made global warming was in fact a junk science scam. And any law based upon this junk science scam is a waste of tax dollars. Henceforth, why the cap and trade legislation has been stalled. The people have rejected it. Man's carbon footprint is 3.27 percent of the Earth's. If you don't remember anything else, just remember that. And it's not worth wasting even one dime of North Little Rock taxpayer funds or losing any freedom to unelected bureaucrats. I urge this council to vote no on Ordinance 10-69 and to get North Little Rock out of the green agenda. The group that was formerly known as ICLI, which may have now changed its name, we don't, we're tired of it. We don't want to pay anymore for junk science. These are from the same people who, just a few years ago, said that the Earth was cooling. As I said, get North Little Rock out of the green agenda, or in November, the voters will elect members who will. And that is all I have to say.
Thank you very much, and we certainly hope the voters will choose wisely. Microphone's still open. We know the voters will choose wisely. Excuse me.
Mayor and councilman, my name is Tom Marr, and I wanted to speak in favor of the land swap. Currently serving as the North Little Rock Chairman of the Historic District Commission. And on occasion, I've worked with this development group and helped them get federal tax credits for some of the work they've done up and down Main Street. And I've been very pleased with the projects that have come out in the past, the renovation of the building where we now have the Starving Artist Cafe. The new Argenta Grocery Store was also a tax credit project. And we've been very excited about some of the new development that's happened on Main Street, the building across the street, Argenta Place. And just wanted to say I would look forward to working with these developers again on developing some more of this land on Main Street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a real quick comment, and I'm Jimmy Arden on the land swap. Don't put the cart before the horse if we're gonna cause city moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Arden.
My name is Tom Roy. I want to speak on the land swap. The real question I have in this whole thing is why are we doing it now when none of the numbers make any sense? Even if we assume the TIF is gonna go forward and it's successful in the courts, the TIF numbers as originally done do not work. The enclave came in at 33 percent below the projected value when it was originally in the TIF. The period of time that the bonds would be paid for was too long. I've recalculated using all the city's numbers, and between the revenue bonds and the TIF bonds, there is a shortfall of over $250,000 per year. Where is that money gonna come from? If the project goes forward, the city's gonna have to raise $250,000. If the TIF doesn't go forward, what is the city gonna do with this property? If it's not purchased back by this group and they don't build a hotel, the city now has all the risks associated with the property that they have. All they're doing is transferring the risk from them to you, and you're getting nothing in return. If you don't get anything in return, why would you make such a swap, especially when the feasibility of the project that they hope goes forward is no longer feasible? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Paul Leopolos, and I'm not a lawyer and I'm not a money man. But we've been down at the corner of Fourth and Main now for over two years, and we've seen this amazing transformation of downtown Argenta, which is part of this wonderful city that we just moved to back in 1999. The momentum that seems to be there, even in this awful economy, is just sort of stunning. People around the state and around the country are talking about Argenta and what's happening down here. So I, given the numbers and whatever, whatever the actual truth is on some of that, I'd like to see Argenta move forward. I'd like to see more and more momentum towards building this vision that the developers and other people and you, the city government, have had over the last three or four years. So I'd like to speak for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone's still open. We've got several others who have signed up, both on this issue as well as other issues. So going once, going twice. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn that part of the meeting and ask that we move on to the agenda. Ms. Marshall.
Unfinished business, all 10-139, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
This is a resolution authorizes the mayor and city clerk to execute documents to exchange certain real property owned by the city for other real property of equal value.
Can I get a motion for adoption? There a second? Motion made and seconded. You know, let me just briefly comment. I know that I had somewhat of a lengthy introduction at last council meeting, and so I won't try to be repetitive along those lines. You know, we have a lot of faith and certainly a lot of energy and without a doubt, a pretty good proven record of being successful at making things happen downtown. The administration, our staff, the city council, the community, there are many things that are down here that if we had, first of all, assumed that it was not gonna be possible, you wouldn't be seeing some of the things that you see now. And of course, I don't need to repeat them. I think you just need to go out the front door of City Hall and take a look. You know, Mr. Hillburn indicated that, you know, that the TIF would destroy this as a possibility. Well, I think the only thing at issue is that one building that is a part of the TIF district, and I don't know that that decision would necessarily torpedo the entire TIF revenue stream. You know, there are a variety of options as well as opportunities. I indicated to Mr. Hillburn in a conversation, and I know he's part of the litigation that is involved in the lawsuit along with the school district, that any option that was afforded the new hotel, and that's again, should it be built, would be offered exactly on the same basis to Mr. Fletcher. In fact, you know, if there was some real estate available, we might even cross the street, build it on top of the street. I mean, there are all kinds of potentially options. And as I indicated earlier, now, I do feel this is a good deal for the city. It's a fair deal. It's one that will give us an opportunity to have some real estate. I believe that real estate, you know, we can get a return on it from parking revenue. It equals to, or at least greater than, the parking that the city would be giving up. The concern that's going to be acquiring the property across the street from our city services building has indicated that we would be able to park on the same conditions that we currently park until development occurs. As you heard one speaker indicate, there are development opportunities that occur on some of the vacant land. You know, we've been working very hard to try to build the kind of city that our kids and grandkids are looking forward to being a part of. And I don't think, in fact, there's not a doubt in my mind that is somewhat reflected, and I don't know how many of you had a chance to see it, in the New York Times Travel section, North Little Rock appeared on about half a page, indicating that North Little Rock had found its cool. Well, I would beg to differ. You know, we never lost it. We've been trying to polish it a little bit, and we've been trying to move it forward. And we've got a lot of faith and a lot of energy, and a lot of our citizens have a belief that we're part of something special, and I have no doubt that we are. And I'm, you know, I'm answering that question, and if not now, when? Because I think for too many years around here, we said when, and we never did take advantage of now. And I know that, you know, we had an opportunity this morning to be on the other side of our new roundabout, which is gonna be opening in about a month and a half to two months. And along with the beginning of building 13 homes, along with 100 homes, that are gonna be going up in the Barron Cross area as well as the Holt neighborhood area. I know that one asked a little earlier about what happened out east. Well, you know, for many years, 30 years, we worked on East Broadway, and we never did really see it happen. But come next week, I'm told by the Arkansas Highway Department, Ms. Robinson and Mr. Taylor, that that project will finish with the laying of some blacktop. That'll be a really super pathway that will continue to move the opportunities for the city to develop out east. We have focused on downtown, and we're proud of it. But we haven't neglected the remaining parts of the city. You know, if you look all over the community, and I don't want to get into naming everything, but, you know, the investment that we did in the Park Hill neighborhood, the efforts that, you know, Alderman Baggett and now, you know, Alderman Phillips in terms of the Levy area. I know that I'm working with Alderwoman Ross as well as White in adding more to the area under the interstate bridge, the Levy Overpass. And we've made big steps in connecting, you know, bicycle paths and sidewalks out there. So, you know, on and on, Burns Park. I mean, I, you know, I don't really know where to stop, so I will, because I don't know where to stop, but if not now, when? And I think now's the time, and I'm gonna ask, offer it, offer the motion and second for any comments, and then I'd like to call it for a vote. Yes, ma'am?
Ms. Ramon, one of the things that, yeah, I've got a question, and, I mean, I wouldn't have any questions whatsoever if there was not the TIF involved, if the parking lot was not, the parking deck was not involved, if it was just an equal swap, you know, the land for land. And there were some questions as far as the appraisal. If we tore the building down, then it doesn't have the same value. I did get the appraisal, and it was assuming that there was no building there. So the appraisal, the 2.2 million was strictly for the land. Is that correct? I mean, that's what I assumed, that's what I read in the appraisal. So, okay. That was one thing that I wanted answered. One of my questions is, there's no timeline in here. It's when, you know, are we gonna be stuck with this building for two years, paying utilities, insurance, you know, the upkeep and the maintenance on that?
Well, you know, to the extent that you phrase "stuck with the building," I don't necessarily believe that I would phrase it the same way. You know, we're gonna have an opportunity to utilize that building up until the time that the exercise, if and when the option is exercised to, you know, purchase two-thirds of it. So, you know, that building has been used and was used, I think, in advantage of the city, and I would intend to use it in a way that certainly wouldn't cost us anything and give us an opportunity to have activities in the city and promote those activities.
Do we have any idea as far as utilities and insurance, what that would cost us per year, or?
Well, the utilities would only be used if the building's being used. So I wouldn't anticipate that there would be utilities to any great extent unless we were having activity there that would offset the cost of the utilities. The insurance, Mr. Sisson, I don't know if he's gotten the value, but we've got a pretty good overall policy with the league. You know, the cost, I don't know that it'd be that significant, but I can't answer that question. Of course, I, you know, obviously, we've had some time to be able to ask that, and if you'd asked it earlier, I'd have been happy to try to get the answer.
Well, a lot of this information, I'm just now slowly getting in. I've been trying to get the appraisal and the different site assessment and everything. If Mr. Boils could just kind of comment on the site assessment, you know, as far as the tanks under the building, you know, it was a previous gas station at one time, and they believe that there's tanks under the building?
No tanks that I'm aware of. Mr. Boils?
On the bore test with the petroleum?
Well, I don't have the environmental report. I know that that was delivered to the City Hall, but Planning does not have that report, so I can't comment on the report I haven't read. I did look at the sandborne maps and noted some of the previous uses. Many years ago, there was a service station on that corner, but I haven't been privy to the report that you're referring to.
You know, I'm no expert. It's 156 pages, and I tried to wade through it, which I am not a legal mind or an engineer or whatever. And so I, and there, you know, it does indicate that there's tanks under there, and then when they did the bore test, that there was possibility. This is from 2005, and it was, you know, it was not done by the city. So I'm just, you know, some concerns there, questions about that.
Our city attorney, you got any comments, Mr. Carter?
I looked at it. I came across that, and I guess I had it on a disk.
Yeah, you had to.
And didn't realize I even had the thing, but came across it, so I read it. And it does appear that it was used as a fuel station. I think they found impressions where fueling locations were, but they didn't locate any tanks.
When they did that?
They didn't indicate that there were underground tanks. They called it weathered gasoline-type residue, I think, or maybe it spilled out and settled at a point, but.
Right. But there was something in there that they couldn't, because of the building, they couldn't get up, you know, any further, to do any further testing.
They didn't say that they couldn't bore underneath the building.
Okay.
Obviously. But those, that was the indication of the test. They did, I think it was weathered gasoline was the words that they used, and we looked at the same one, I think.
Okay. I've got other questions, but if anybody wants else to...
Is that, are you finished?
For right now.
Okay. Alderwoman Ross? Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Alderwoman Robinson?
I'm probably right about Ross. I conducted a town hall meeting for Ward Two regarding the land swap, and the reason why is that, you know, I had been getting emails and telephone calls. And some of the things that Alderwoman Ross mentioned tonight, you know, was mentioned that during the town hall meeting. Some people were for it, however, some were not. Now, since the town hall meeting, I have been getting telephone calls from my constituents saying they do not want this land swap to take place. I'm also aware that we do have a business owner that has a business in Ward Two that was interested in purchasing property at 700 Main Street. And I don't know what the status is on that. And, Mayor, I don't know if this gentleman has the financing and the funding to put this business that has been approved, well, the business, his site plan and all, had been approved by the History Commission. Is it possible to pull Seventh and Main out of the land swap?
Not at this point.
Not at this point. One of the things that was mentioned is that if the hotel comes in, it being in a, I think the term is enterprise zone, that they could hire folks from Ward Two in the enterprise zone? I may not have my facts exactly correct, but if a hotel does come in, do we have any assurance that they will hire folks from Ward Two?
Well, I think they're inspired to hire folks from Ward Two because they get, excuse me? They would be inspired to hire folks from Ward Two, or certainly from the enterprise zone, because they receive, I believe, a tax credit in the amount of 8,000 a year.
Empowerment zone.
Empowerment zone, excuse me.
Empowerment zone, I'm sorry.
That's right. That's correct.
The empowerment zone. Well, and, you know, I'm one, you know, always let you know upfront how I feel and what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna vote against this resolution.
Thank you.
Because the people of Ward Two, you know, based on the phone calls I received after the town hall meeting, has asked that I vote against it. I will say that in the past, I have supported Argenta. Argenta is a part of Ward Two, and I am for the development, but at this point, it doesn't matter what I personally feel or how I personally think. The people of Ward Two have contacted me and asked that I vote against it, and I will vote against it.
Ms. Ross?
Okay, here's my question. What if we make the land swap, the TIF goes on for another five years, what happens then? What happens to parking, what if the parking deck can't be built?
We have a building. We use, sell, we do whatever we want to do in terms of what we believe is the best interest of the city.
But they're wanting to build the hotel, correct?
That's correct.
I mean, we're doing all this for it to get the hotel. Can they not?
That is a big part of the inspiration, without a doubt.
But, I mean, they can still build the hotel with a parking lot as opposed to a parking deck if they want to go forward with it, right?
That's, in accordance with the, are the rules that we have adopted, they can do whatever they want with the property. Yes, ma'am?
Do we have a name for the hotel? Do we have a, I mean, who is this mysterious, you know, mysterious hotel? No one can tell us who's interested in putting a hotel there. They just tell us a hotel is coming in.
We have an opportunity, and this opportunity is one that I, with, if you want to look at a history, now, we didn't have a Third and Main, three-story building with a full activity over at Argenta Place. We didn't have a grocery store that just opened up. We didn't have 13, 14 townhouses on Maple Street. You know, I could go on, but there's a little bit of history that I think generates a whole lot of confidence that people aren't going to just be spouting words and not be willing to put actions behind those words. So I will say this, Alderwoman Robinson, you know, faith is something that we have a lot of, and that faith is proven to be accurate in many of the instances when we've tried to do things. The people of North Little Rock have given a lot of faith. The North Little Rock Chamber of Commerce has been a big partner with moving development forward in downtown. So, you know, to me, you know, faith has got a bit of history to it, and faith is based on reality. Alderman Taylor?
Mr. City Attorney, this resolution that we're voting on tonight, this, we're voting on the land swap. We're not voting on the TIF. We're not voting on the parking deck. We're not voting on the hotel. We're just voting on, the private developers have some land, the city has some land, and we're exchanging. We're doing basically a 10-31.
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, your answer is yes. You may be motivated because you believe that a hotel might come in downtown.
It is a possibility.
That may motivate you, that you think that this is a proper resolution. Development of property that is currently owned by the city may be a motivator for you to... of property that is currently owned by the city may be a motivator for you to vote for this resolution or not, either way. The most important point, I guess, from a legal aspect is to say, are we getting equal value? Are we converting parcels of property that we own, that we already own, and exchanging them for another parcel of property of equal or greater value? And from a legal standpoint, really, that's the only question. The appraisal supports that that is occurring, so beyond that, it's strictly a matter of policy.
In fact, you know, I know it's indicated that it is at equal value. If you want to base it on the appraisal, we're getting about $95,000 more than what the appraisal supports in terms of the negotiated recommendation. So it's not really equal as such. We are, we are receiving about $95,000 more than what the appraiser said that the swap is, is worth. Ninety-five thousand to the better. Yes ma'am, Ms. Ross?
Okay, so this is my question. If we're only talking about swapping land, why doesn't the current owner just sell it to the hotel? Why are we doing all this swapping?
Because it's an opportunity that, that in my mind is the best way for us to take advantage of moving forward and trying to develop this city and to try to develop it in a way that we're going to add to the kind of environment that we've been trying to create down here. Yes ma'am, Ms. Robinson?
Well, I'm back to this Rye Building where Alderman Ross said, and, and Jason mentioned something about, you know, at one time, there was a gas station there and what's under the ground there, under the building. And if we tear down that building, will there be anything special or any additional funds we have to do because at one time, there were tanks or whatever under there?
If, if tanks were located underneath the property, if that were to be found, then there would be cleanup associated with it. I'm not an engineer. My reading of the Phase Two environmental just said that they had found weathered gasoline within some of the bore samples. It didn't seem, it didn't appear to me to be an excessive environmental issue. I'm, I'm not an engineer. I'm taking my best read at, at, at the, at the Phase Two environmental, and there may be people who are more familiar with than I am who can give you a better answer.
Well, since we're just stabbing at this, wouldn't it be best that we kind of delay this and kind of make sure that, find out what's going on under the ground so that in the future, if we decide to tear it down, it, we won't have an exorbitant cost? I mean, it's just a question. I'm just asking. I may be out of line, but I'm just asking.
Alderman Robinson, you know, if, if we wanted to try to find a known to every unknown, you know, the, this city would still experience one vehicle on Main Street on Saturday and Sunday mornings, and that's Joe Thomason's delivery vehicle. So, you know, I'm, I'm going to ask the council to decide tonight. We've had this on our agenda now. We've been discussing it for several years. I know I've been working on trying to add to the hotel inventory down here for at least 10, maybe 15 years. This is an opportunity that I hope the council decides to take advantage of. I think it's an opportunity that's going to prove successful, or I wouldn't be asking you to consider it.
Okay.
Yes ma'am, Ms. Ross?
One more time. I don't understand then why we have to do the swap. If it's about building a hotel, why did they not just purchase it from the current owner?
Ms. Ross, you can exercise your vote however you want.
Okay, I will.
Yes, Ms. Baggett?
Mayor, I know you've done a good job with the downtown. I mean, that's, there's no question about that, but, and I want to do the right thing here. And I know I talked to you, and I told you I want to do the right thing. I know you were quoted in the newspaper as saying that the city wouldn't have to pay, there wouldn't be any money paid out of city funds to build this parking deck, but I don't understand where the money would come from. We got utility funds, capital improvement funds, general funds. Where would the money, where would the money come from to pay for this in order to, I mean, if it's a 200-room, we need 240 parking spaces according to the specs for city code. If it's 130-room, we need 156 parking spaces. That's, it's going to cost approximately six, seven million dollars if it's a 200-room, and a five million dollars if it's 130-room. And my second point is that we're in litigation on these TIFs, and there hasn't even been any hearing filed or anything to settle this case between Pulaski County and the city of North Little Rock. And if the city of North Little Rock loses, they're going to file an appeal. And if the city, if Pulaski County loses, they're going to file an appeal. I mean, it's going to be a couple of, I would think a couple of years before it would go through the, the.
Alderman, let me just say, you know, that, that I, I can't sit here, nor did I sit here when I arrived 22 years ago and tell you what was going to happen the next day or even the next year or even the next 10 years. I can tell you that with effort and energy and desire, and with the partners that we've been able to create, I couldn't tell you that we were going to build a ballpark five, six years ago when we did. But the voters decided that they thought it was a good idea. So, you know, I don't have all the answers right now, nor would I pretend to. But I can tell you that, and it's certainly my belief, that the master plan that we developed, and, and Mr. Hillburn, it's no guarantee that that master plan, we, I've been working on this, like I said, for 10, 15 years. So that master plan doesn't have a thing to do, in my mind, with what we're trying to do tonight. You know, I've been after hotel rooms for downtown for years. So, you know, this is what I believe to be a big step in the right direction. It's no guarantee, and until we have answers that this council and this community feel are justifiable, you know, then we're not going to be coming back to this council with a plan.
And, and I understand that we need a convention center. I was telling you the story about the, the Pentecostal church up there, and they brought people in from out of town, and they wanted to stay on the river, but they couldn't because there wasn't hotels in, on this side. So they went across the street, they went across the river and took their business over there into Little Rock, and that's not what we want. We want, so I mean, I see the positives and the negatives, and it's tough, so.
Alderwoman Robinson?
I'm just going to make a comment, Mayor. I know that we've had a master plan for the downtown area, but the people of Ward Two has asked that we do a master plan for the entire city. That's my comment.
And Alderwoman Robinson, you know, without a doubt, we are building one brick at a time this entire community. You heard me talk a little earlier that we don't intend to neglect any part of this city. The, the benefits that this council has, has shared have been, I'm not going to deny that there's not been an exit downtown, but your enterprise zones are downtown. The opportunity to hire your people are downtown. The opportunity to inspire people to hire folks in Ward Two are downtown. And, and without a doubt, that's, this downtown is all of our town.
I agree.
Alderwoman Robinson?
Ross.
Ross, I'm sorry. Y'all, y'all have been mutting and jeffing me all night, so I just...
Now, wait a minute. And I know you get frustrated, but I get just as frustrated. You know, when you said if I had asked sooner about the insurance, it took me two weeks to get the, the documents on the option. The site assessment, that took two weeks to get that.
You, you asked me, and I got it to you two days later.
Well, I had sent emails, though. I mean, Mr. Carter and Mr. Boles, they, they all know that I had been looking for that. I finally did get it from John Godan on the, you know, on the site assessment. The appraisal, I had to ask for that. I mean, this was something that each individual person would have had to ask rather than just giving us all this information. If you had not asked for it, you would not have gotten it. So I get just as frustrated by not having the information given to us. And for that reason, that's why I'm opposed to this, not only because of the TIF, which I voted against. It's not just the school district. There's five mills from the city, and there's five mills from the county that's used in that TIF also.
Alderman Baggett?
And on top of that, Mayor, when I was running for office, one of my, two of my big deals was that I would not travel on city money, and you know that I don't do that. And TIFs, I wouldn't be for TIFs. I wouldn't be for taking money from our Pulaski County schools and giving it to, to the city. So I don't know where that would end me up at the end of that deal, but I, I don't know if that'd be good or not, so.
On the motion?
Yep.
All right.
Just a, just a short comment. I've, I've had phone calls, I've had emails, and I've, I've visited people face-to-face about this. And it's kind of split down the middle as far as the type of comments that I'm receiving. The one thing, though, that seems to come out of all the comments, whether they're for or against the land swap, is, is the development of downtown North Little Rock, and that the fact is that we probably do need another hotel in downtown North Little Rock. And, and you know what my stance is on the land swap, but I do want you to know that, and I've heard you say this, and, and if you might, you might want to reiterate, is that you've pledged that the citizens in North Little Rock are not going to have to spend any of their money, nor is the city going to have to spend any of its money, which is the city's, for building that parking deck. And, and I'm, and I'm here tonight to tell you that even if I do vote for the land swap, I'm not going to support any legislation that would allocate any of the city funds to build a parking deck. Period.
Alderman Phillips?
I've sat here all night long and I've listened to this, but what I haven't heard, anybody said one word about the land swap deal and what they're fixing to do with the land. They're fixing to build houses, they're fixing to build more for people to stay in, live in. The deal with the Rye Building, it might not happen for five years, but the people said they, they do want to build. They want to build the condos, they want to build the houses. This is what's fixing to happen. The other end of it, if it happens five years from now, or if it happens one year from now, I mean, there, there's two sides to the story. And my side is, is for the housing, for the condos, and the development of that area over there, besides just sitting there with the grass on it.
Alderman White?
I've been listening to all this, and, and as I said to you, Mayor, that I've talked to a lot of people, I've had a lot of emails, had conversations, and what I come out with is that the risk is great for North Little Rock. Our city has a risk with this. And I know many times we've entered into deals where a lot of risk is taken. There've been votes I've made here that maybe I haven't been 100% about for development in Argenta because I see other areas of the city that need attention as well. So this is a difficult vote, but I still kind of come back to the same fact that it's a lot of risk on the city. I know it's described as a fair deal, and that's a good thing to say, but is it the best deal? That's what I'm going to leave it with.
Alderman Baggett?
Mayor, you came to the people two times that I know of and asked for a penny sales tax, and people trusted you, and they gave it to you, and you, you did with the money what you said you were going to do. You built us one of the finest senior citizen centers in the state. We've got Dicky Stevens Park down here. Why don't we just go to the people and ask them, tell them what we want to do? Everybody knows that we've got a great city down here, we've got a great downtown going. Ask the people for the money to build a parking deck down here and build a parking deck somewhere down here that we need it. And then, at the developers, which Mr. Godan and them, which I really like and, and respect, and, y'all are doing a great job down here, and, and just, you know, buy the land and build your motel and ask the people for the money for the parking deck. They'll give it to you. I mean, I mean, that's, when we come downtown, that's, that's what we need to know. We need to find out. Where are we going to park at? We need parking spaces downtown to park in. We got all these great things down here. We need parking room.
On the motion?
Ross?
No.
White?
No.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
No.
Baggett?
No.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Mayor votes yes.
Okay.
Next item?
R10-141, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
This is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter to an agreement with DCH Enterprises LLC to provide construction management services for the North Little Rock Compressed Natural Gas CNG Fueling Station, appropriating funds and for other purposes.
Call it. All right, you did call it, please. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do I have an amendment, Mr. Carter?
Not to this one?
Not to this, Mayor.
All right, on the motion?
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R10-142, Mayor, Alderman Baggett and Phillips?
Mayor, we skipped 140.
Wait a minute, we're still on 141, didn't we just?
141.
We just did 140.
10-140, there we go. Mayor Hayes.
Please, I think we, wait a minute.
She read 141.
I skipped it, I did 141.
Okay, now 140.
Back up to 140, I'm sorry.
Okay.
What number were we?
This is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter to an engineering contract with Marla Engineering Company Incorporated to provide engineering services for the design of a CNG station.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Well, I voted on Marla.
Got an amendment?
I voted on Marla.
I'm not clear on, on what, what vote we just had and what matter we're...
Yeah, I think we got confused, Ross. What did we just vote on?
We voted on 141.
All right, was that, vote on 141?
I take that back.
Did you skip 140?
Yes, she did.
She went back to 140.
Okay. Okay. Why don't we move to expunge the vote while that's taken?
Don't move.
Second.
Oh, we're all, all right, there's a motion made and seconded to expunge the vote that we were just, that we just took, and that was on 141?
On 141, okay. Who made the motion, so I can get it?
Ross.
Yes.
Ross, okay.
Yes.
Okay, to expunge the vote. Okay. Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, now, Ms. Marshall, would you please call R140?
Now, R10-141.
Okay.
This is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter to an engineering contract with Marla Engineering Company Incorporated to provide engineering services for the design of a CNG station.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. On the motion. We don't, this is not what we're amending, is it, Mr.? All right, now we're all on the same, that's, all right, on the motion.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Okay. Now, R10-141.
Please call it.
This is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter to an agreement with DCH Enterprises LLC to provide construction management services for the North Little Rock Compressed Natural Gas CNG Fueling Station, appropriating funds.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Do we have an amendment?
Yes, we do, Mayor. And I apologize for not having this distributed before City Council meeting. I was fighting a cantankerous copy machine downstairs, but I've got it done, and I can distribute this. I guess we could just pass it around the circle and I could explain it. I'll take off whenever you want me to.
Go ahead.
Okay. The purpose of this amendment is, I guess, is a result of a meeting between myself and Joe Smith, who is the head of our A and E Committee. The A and E Committee is a, is an internal committee that's established pursuant to state law to review requests for proposals and requests for qualifications that are issued for professional services. Professional services are things like architects, engineers, sometimes attorneys, land surveyors are in there by definition, and any other profession that we define to be a professional services by two-thirds vote. When I reviewed the agreement that we had that was proposed with DCH Enterprises, it doesn't appear to me that really what we had issued the RFP for, which quite frankly was a pretty broad RFP, and I can let Joe Smith comment as to that himself, we were just trying to get some guidance as how to proceed with the construction of a CNG station. And among those respondents, DCH was one of them who, at least within the judgment of the A and E Committee, held some, held sufficient expertise that they felt like... held sufficient expertise that they felt like could give good guidance to the city with the construction of this facility. But it's not really construction management that they were looking for. I think they had labeled it as a construction manager. But a construction manager is someone who steps in, manages a project, usually holds contracts with subcontractors, and then gives us a deliverable product at the end. Normally, construction managers are at risk. They are engaging in the contracts, it's their finances on the line. That's not the contract that we had here. We want a contract where we're going to be advised. Marler Engineer is on board to handle the drafting, to design the facilities that we need. What we wanted was an outside consultant. Previously, City Council had designated Alternative Fuel Consulting to be a professional service. And that's why, in the agreement that you see with the amendments provided, all we've really done is change construction manager to Alternative Fuel Consultant throughout the agreement. And that's the only change that's been made, is the title of what they're doing. The substance is exactly the same, because it wasn't really construction management services to begin with.
Who's going to be liable?
It's the city's project.
City is going to, is city going to conduct its own construction management?
We'll be handling contracts ourselves.
Who's going to oversee construction?
I guess that's going to have to be managed through our.
Our internal process.
Right, through Congress. He's going to have to handle that.
For all practical purposes, I'll be the construction manager with our staff and our three engineers.
Ms. Ross?
In here under Phase Four Project Management during construction, there's 14,000 for project management? So they, is that just their consultation on project management? In this 46,000, here's the breakdown on page 11.
See, that total fee is somewhere around 7%. And that includes like four trips to Little Rock. It includes supervision during the construction, and which is fairly a very inexpensive fee, in my opinion.
So the bidding, I mean, they've got in here $5,336 for bidding, so they will be putting out any kind of bids?
Yes.
They're on this?
They're writing the specs for us.
They will, they'll just be writing the specs on them. But you will actually do the bid process?
Correct. We will bid it, we will hire them, we will contract with the subcontractors. This is not a real complicated job as far as construction goes. It's a complicated job as far as equipment goes. And that's where we didn't know, we didn't have any experience.
That's where they come in, they're their authority.
Exactly. They've built a lot of these in Oklahoma. They were recommended by Chester.
We're not putting in a regular gas station, we're putting in a natural gas.
Correct.
Fuel station. We're on the amendment?
This is attached.
Excuse me?
This is just attached.
Need a motion?
Yeah.
To amend, so move.
Second.
All right, on the motion to amend, Ms. Marshall?
On the motion to amend, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Move for adoption is amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
I'm going to pass because I've had a chance to read over this.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Next item?
O10-65, Mayor Hayes.
No, we missed.
No, I don't think so.
Ms. Marshall? 142.
142.
Here you go. Okay, didn't have a number on here.
You still up at Cowboy Game last night?
R10-142, on the Baggett and Phillips.
Please call it.
The resolution is set in the low bid and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter to a contract with Cobah Contracting Incorporated for drainage improvements from 47th Street to 49th Street in the amount of $112,698,09, 36-year, 2010 CDBG program.
So move.
Second.
Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher? Now, O10-65.
Please call it.
Mayor Hayes, this is an ordinance waiver informing of bidding requirements for repair work to the Unit One Generator at the Murray Hydroelectric Plant. Approving testing to ascertain if stator and rotor need rewinding. Appropriating funds, first reading.
Move to suspend the rules, place on the second reading.
Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher? This is an ordinance waiver informing of bidding requirements for repair work to the Unit One Generator at the Murray Hydroelectric Plant. Approving testing to ascertain if stator and rotor need rewinding. Appropriating funds, second reading.
Move to. Place on third reading.
Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
This is an ordinance waiver informing of bidding requirements
for repair work to the Unit One Generator at the Murray Hydroelectric Plant. Approving testing to ascertain if stator and rotor need rewinding. Appropriating funds, third and final reading.
On the question?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
O10-66, Mayor Hayes?
Please call it.
This is an ordinance vacating and abandoning a planted alleyway along the south boundary line of Block Seven Riverside Addition to the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas. First reading.
Move to suspend the rules, place on the second reading.
Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
This is an ordinance vacating and abandoning a planted alleyway,
alleyway along the south boundary line of Block Seven Riverside Addition to the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas. Second reading.
Move, suspend the rules, place on third reading, I have a question. On, is there a second? On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Mr. Bowles? You look good in that green shirt tonight, I might add.
They made me wear it tonight.
They made you wear it?
Well, I asked you to.
Or you wanted to wear it, didn't you?
You want me to explain this one?
Please.
This is on the block where the presidential bridge is located. Our survey did not show an alley. The neighbor immediately adjoining the city's property produced a older plat that contends it was an alley. So the best way to resolve it is to abandon a non-existing alley.
Thank you, and I need to see you after the council meeting. All right, Attorney City Attorney?
I would like to add Gary Mills mentioned that he believes that there's a wastewater line that runs through that area, but Section Two preserves that easement. I know that had come up in past abandonment. So I just want to make that clear on the record, that that is preserved.
If there is one. Do I have a motion for adopt on third? I'll move.
So move.
There's, okay, on the motion?
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
O10-67, Alderman Ross?
Please call it.
This is an ordinance granted condition to use to rely in automobile sales lot in a C4 zone for certain real property located 3604 Highway 161 in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas. First reading.
Move, suspend the rules, place on the second reading.
Second.
Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher? This is an ordinance granted condition to use to rely in automobile sales lot in a C4 zone for certain real property located 3604 Highway 161 in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas. Second reading.
Move, suspend the rules, and place it on third rules, and place it on the third reading, and then I have some comments.
Question?
Second.
All right, do you want to go ahead and do it now, or just go ahead? Let's take it a third, and then we'll ask questions. On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
This is an ordinance granted condition to use to rely in automobile sales lot in a C4 zone for certain real property located 3604 Highway 161 in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas. Third and final reading.
All right, questions?
I guess I need to ask the applicant if they understand that they have to do all these conditions prior to getting their business license and opening.
Mr. Richards is.
There are about 13 conditions here. And one in particular that I'm looking at is parking area to be asphalted. So are you in agreement with all of this?
Yes, ma'am, sure is.
And you understand that if you fail to do any of these, that your permit is subject to be pulled?
I'm staying.
Alderman Height? I was just curious as what ward this was in, and were Alderman, Taylor, and Robinson, uh, written this?
It is not in Ward.
It's not in Ward Two?
It's in Ward One.
Just curious. Alderman Ross?
I wouldn't be sponsoring anything in their ward, that's for sure. I wouldn't mess with them.
Trust me, I learned from experience in my first council meeting, okay?
Right. This is Mr. Benny Richards, and that was one thing that I wanted to ask you. And I told you that I would ask you, you know, these different things, you know, the county, that's all. There's one that's no parking vehicles on any grass, and you agreed to that. No wrecked or inoperable vehicles to be kept on the lot. I know that we've had in the past, you know, with some car lots, and that's why we've gotten so strict on this, that Monday through Saturday, eight to six?
Right.
Okay. And you understand no repairs or detailing cars outside?
I'm staying.
Okay, because I, you know, I don't want somebody to come up later and say that they didn't know, and then when code comes out. No front yard fence, and planting the trees along Highway 161. Did you say you've already?
Yeah, I already got that thing here.
You got that, you've already done that? Oh, good, okay. The six-foot grass strip, I think that you've done that. And note, this was one that I added too. No outside sales or storage of tires or vehicle parts. So that was added. You are okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
Because I know that I went out there one time, and there were several tires out there, and that's...
Yeah, well, I have them in racks now, you know?
Okay, all right, so we won't see any of that then. Okay, I just want to make sure that we got this all straight. That's the only question I have.
Well, it's real good that we won't see any of that, because I drive by there every day. And so usually I keep these little things somewhere in the car. So I just want you to know that I do drive by there every day.
I'll correct everything, everything you want me to do.
Okay.
Alderman Taylor and Alderman White?
Uh, how many cars are we allowing him to have on the lot at one particular time?
You know, I don't know if planning provided. Mr. Boles, was that?
That wasn't there. This is not a really large lot.
But do we need to add that?
I think so, um, because...
That's a good catch.
Driving past that lot and driving past many of the lots on East Broadway.
Twenty-five, how many, how many parking space?
He says twenty-five would be the maximum, if you want to have.
How many?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. So you agree to twenty-five, a maximum of twenty-five, is that?
I don't know if twenty-five cars will fill that lot.
I got a double row in the front there, and I got, like, on the side, on the side from the street to the building. I'm at fault there where I can park someone on that side over there. All the cars will be on asphalt. I have a double row in the front, in the front.
What's the width of that lot?
On the side over there, I'm doing asphalt over there, where I can add another ten or fifteen on the side over there. If they're parked, if they're lined up right, like I'm gonna have them.
Alderman...
Excuse me?
Can I ask a question? What's the width or the size of the lot? I don't see it anywhere here.
Well, I'm looking at the area of the lot, and, I mean, it just appears that the cars are just kind of, really just all over the place.
I said one time, one time it was like that, before I know it better.
Go ahead, Alderman Ross. Well, I think Alderman White first, and then Alderman.
Well, if you want to stay with this train of thought, I'll...
Well, I was just curious, how many cars have you had on that lot at one time?
Well, about thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two.
Oh, okay.
Okay, do you have a plan for the parts? Because as I drive around and look at car lots, I see batteries sitting out and all kinds of things.
I never had no business like that.
So you have a plan?
Never run a business like that.
Okay.
Never run a business like that.
Okay. What is the plan for those parts? Do you...
Well, my plan is, I'm planning to rent that lot next door, and use it, and put a price on the back, and that way I have places for stuff like that, where junk cars will be hanging around, parts and stuff like that, which I never ran no business like that, no way, with parts and things. I've been a neat, neat person, running a business for the last thirty years.
So you're going to acquire that lot as well, did you say?
Yeah, I'm gonna purchase that lot next door to me, put a price on the back, for stuff like that, for cars that are not running, and parts and stuff like that.
So will this have to go back to planning when that second lot is purchased? Mr. Boles, will that have to go back to planning?
Yes, Ms. White.
All we're considering is the lot that's described.
That's correct.
Not aware of another lot being...
No, if he purchased another lot to store cars and...
That would have to be...
Have to go back to planning.
We have to come here for conditional use for car sales lots. I'm not sure if car repair, it doesn't have the same review. If a building's built, we'll have a planning commission review, but we specifically added car sales lots as conditional use in two thousand and five.
Okay.
I don't really see how twenty-five cars will fill that lot. I would be much more comfortable with twenty, and I'd also like to see some kind of language as to the lot should be, some kind of neatness or some, something where we're insured there are no batteries, no tires, no car parts are laying around on the lot.
Well, I think that's...
I'm sorry, I never run a business like that.
Mr. Richards, I mean, not to say that you have or have not, but believe me, I've been down this road before, and it didn't turn out the way it was supposed to. So I know now that if we put the conditions in the legislation, then we have something to go back on.
Alderman Ross?
I think number eleven, that's why I added that one, that no outside sales or storage of tires or vehicle parts. Would that cover your batteries and things that you were talking about? That's why that was added, so that there would not be car parts laying around.
I guess that will do, Ms. Ross.
Okay.
Well, did he need an...
Robinson?
What, do we need an amendment that there are only twenty cars at one time on the lot? Let me ask something. You know, if we say only twenty cars at one time on the lot, his employees, where would they...
That means everybody. That means employees, that means family members, that means cars for sale, that means cars. Because that way, we're not, we're not, we can't circumvent the system by saying, oh, well, that's my sister's car, or that's so-and-so's car. If we just say twenty cars, we don't care who they belong to, then we've got something.
When he stated twenty-five cars at the time, were you thinking about that twenty-five including the sales as well as employees?
Well, I don't have them in, I don't have them in employees.
Okay.
Okay, where are we?
We're trying to add a condition of twenty cars.
All right, well, somebody gonna do that?
I have one question. Can you make, twenty cars?
It's gonna be, it's gonna be tight. That's probably be running a tight schedule, especially on season when school loans come out, when income tax times come out, you know, that's my best, that's my best time, you know, with school loans and that, you know, to go and bill up a few cars to make a living.
We'll split the difference with you, twenty-two.
I need twenty-five, that's being, I'm gonna tell you. You can't do it, I don't see no reason, I can handle twenty-five on them. I've been, I've been having it on them, it's real easy, you know, with plenty, with plenty of space, especially the space...
Let me just go, we're at a point where we can pass something that you feel is prudent, and we're not, I mean, we can do a little negotiating, but let's see if we can take a stand as to where we want to be. Alderman Ross?
Okay, my question, if you have twenty-five cars on that lot, are you going to be able to pull that car out without having to back out five cars?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
So. It's up to you, Alderman Taylor, if you want to put that condition up.
I'd like to add the condition of twenty, twenty-two max.
All right, there's a motion to amend? Wait just a second, let's take this one step at a time. You know, is that an amended condition you wish to impose?
I present that in the form of amendment.
I'd rather say twenty-two than twenty with two, twenty-two max, so let's just say twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
All right, there's a motion to amend by allowing maximum vehicles of twenty-two. Is there a second to that? Is there a second to that? Motion dies for lack of a second. All right, now Alderman Ross?
I do have amendment of twenty-five cars. I would like to make number fourteen say a maximum of twenty-five cars on the lot.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
The twenty-five cars will include the cars for sale and his vehicle, or a visitor's vehicle, or whatever. It'd be the twenty-five.
Let me find, I might make that work.
Total of twenty-five vehicles of any and all kinds?
Total.
Is he okay?
Okay, wait just a second, let me make sure we understand what the motion is to amend. That's twenty-five vehicles of any and all types. Is that correct, Alderman Ross?
That was my, that was...
Okay, so is, and is there a second to that? Is there a second? I mean, there was a second to that.
That already was a second.
Okay, now we're in discussion on that. So any more discussion? Alderman White?
I guess I would ask if, what about a potential customer that's there? Is that included in the twenty-five?
Hey, that's, yeah. Oop, I got twenty-five cars in the lot, you can't park here.
Mr. Carter has a comment.
Mr. Carter?
I'm assuming the amendment would be, no more than twenty-five vehicles shall be parked on the lot at any given time regardless of ownership.
Is that your motion, or was that your motion? And that's the second. So that's under discussion, of any and all types, including visitors. Any more further discussion? Alderman Phillips and Height?
First thing, I want to know who is gonna see that this is done. If you pull into his lot, and there's twenty-five people there, and he tells you to leave, are you gonna be mad?
Mr. Ard, if you want to comment, you know, the doors are right out there, and feel free to talk all you want, but right now in this meeting, you know, we're gonna ask that this chair acknowledge whoever's talking, we're talking out there, and that includes you, Mr. Ard.
I don't, I don't know how we're gonna do it, because you've got car lots all up and down East Broadway that's got fifty, sixty, seventy cars on it, whatever cars they want. They're selling cars, that's their business, that's how they pay revenue, everything back to the city. Now, he can only put so many cars on the square footage of lot he has. He can't put a hundred cars there, because he doesn't have enough footage.
Right now, we're on the amendment that says twenty-five vehicles regardless of ownership. Alderman Baggett?
What about...
Sorry, Alderman Height was next, and then Alderman Baggett.
I want to ask the applicant, you've got years of experience in operating a car lot, right?
Correct.
Correct. What do you think a reasonable number of cars would be?
I think, I think about twenty-seven, you know, about twenty-seven, one employee, man, and, and...
Twenty-five for sale, right?
Leave room for about six, seven customers at one time, one time to come on the lot.
I don't have any experience in determining how many cars that should go on that lot.
I know, I know what the lot will hold, and I know what space it'll have.
Yeah, right now, the motion is twenty-five. We're on discussion on that motion, all right? Alderman Baggett, and then Alderman Taylor.
What about twenty-five cars that are, that are not tagged, that do not have tags on them?
Right now, that now, that's the amendment, we're gonna have to vote this amendment up or down, and that's twenty-five regardless of ownership.
I mean, they were, Jimmy was, Alderman Phillips was trying to find out if, you know, if your brother, sister, or whatever came over, and there was twenty-five, and they came over. I mean, their cars would be tagged, and they wouldn't be for sale, and they would be there visiting you, and then they would be leaving. But if the cars were, if there were twenty-five cars on your lot, and they were not tagged, and you had the paperwork in your office to show that those twenty-five cars were for sale and on the books, I think that would be, if code came by, that would be sufficient to prove that they, that they weren't there.
Right now, we're talking about twenty-five vehicles regardless of ownership. We're on that amendment. We're gonna dispose of that amendment, and then if that is not adopted, you know, then we'll deal with it. If it is adopted, then you can amend the amended. Right now, Alderman Taylor, and then Alderman Ross.
The idea behind the number of cars on the lot, if you drive down East Broadway, Mr. Phillips, I guarantee you, there are some of those lots that have way more cars than the lot is allotted for, or fit on the lot. Cars that are on flat, cars that are wrecked, cars that have grass growing up around them, I mean, it's just a mess. And I think if we put, if we start putting some rules on these car lots, then Alderman Robinson and myself, we won't have the problem that we're having right now on these Broadway by trying to get this cleaned up after the fact. If we put the rules in place beforehand, then we have, we have something we can bring back and say, you're not doing what you said you were gonna do.
What I, what I was, what I was saying though is, is, do you know how many cars he needs to put on that lot? Are you qualified to tell that man how many cars he should put on his lot? I'm not.
I'm not.
You know what, a reasonable man bases his judgment on the evidence, and I drive by that lot every single day, as Alderman Robinson does, and I'm telling you, in the past, it's been a mess.
Let me remind everybody, because, you know, if it's on the, if it's on the amendment, you know, we, I guess we got used to strand at the beginning of the council meeting, but we're on the amendment, and if the debate is pertinent to that, then it'll be okay. If it's not, then, then we're gonna rule it out of order. Alderman Height?
All right, my suggestion would be this, none of us, there's an authority on how many cars should go on that lot. I think we agree on that. I think what we should do in the future is get the planning commission, planning commission to set standards based on the size of lots. That way, it's fair to everybody that applies for a permit to have a car lot, rather than us just coming up with a hypothetical number, thinking, well, we want twenty, twenty-two, twenty-five, or twenty-seven. In this case, this gentleman's case, he thinks he feels like twenty-seven cars is appropriate for that lot. But if we, if we have some standards, some rules to go by, then we'll know the answer to our questions, and we won't have to spend an hour discussing how many cars goes on that lot.
That's a great idea, Alderman, but let me, let me point out something that, you know, and Mr. City Attorney, you can help address this. Whatever condition we put out tonight, we can always come back and amend that condition sometime in the future, if I'm not mistaken.
We can.
So, you know, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, my only concern is, is that once you establish a conditional use permit, if you restrict it at some later point in time, once they've already established their business, and that could cause harm to the business that's in reliance on their conditional use permit, you can grant, always grant greater permission, but, you know, there is caution to be had in trying to restrict a permit that's already been granted.
So what you're saying is that if we did twenty-five, we might come back and do twenty-six, twenty-seven, or twenty-eight, but we better not, we better be careful in coming back and doing twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-two. So, I mean, I, you know, I appreciate what Alderman Height said, and the effort to try to move this on. You know, I'd say that, you know, that there's no witness, including the proponent, that can really testify very accurately as to what ought to be on that lot. His interests are having more, and the city's interests are not necessarily having less, but having something that's appropriate. So we've got on the floor a motion for twenty-five irrespective of ownership. If your comments are to that, then feel free. Alderman Ross?
That's exactly what I was gonna say, that I would like to go ahead with the twenty-five. That was your original number, was twenty-five. If you see that twenty-five is not enough, then you come back, and I'll work with you. How's that? Okay? And in the future, if planning can do that, I would appreciate it, because we have put numbers on them before, they have had that.
All right, we're on the amendment. Any further discussion on the amendment? Ms. Marshall?
On the amendment, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
No.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Richard?
Yes.
All right, now do we have a motion, or any other discussion? A motion to adopt is amended?
Motion to adopt is amended.
There's may, second. Any further discussion on the motion?
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
No.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Richard?
Yes.
On the emergency clause, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
No.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Richard?
Yes.
Next time?
Oh, ten sixty-eight, Mayor Hayes?
Please call it.
This is an ordinance to establish external street lighting illumination regulations of the city of North Little Rock, Palassee County, Arkansas, providing for the codification of the ordinance. First reading.
Move, suspend the rules, place it on the second reading?
Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Richard?
Yes.
This is an ordinance to establish exterior street lighting illumination regulations of the city of North Little Rock, Palassee County, Arkansas, providing for the codification of the ordinance. Second reading.
Move, suspend the rules, place it on its third reading?
Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Richard?
Yes.
This is an ordinance to establish exterior street lighting illumination regulations of the city of North Little Rock, Palassee County, Arkansas, providing for the codification of the ordinance. Third and final reading.
Alderman Height?
I just, a question, is anyone here from the Green Committee tonight?
Yes, we've got two people here, as a matter of fact. Ms. Kissinger, you want to come on up, and we have the chairman of the committee, Mr. Charlie Foster, who is available for any question on the next items, next item. But Ms. Kissinger, you got any questions?
You just want to explain this to us? I mean, you know, from looks at it, I think it's great. I mean, I just wonder if anybody would be, a hardship would be created by this, by us doing this?
It should not create any, any type of hardships. The Green Agenda Committee, a street lighting task force was set up. We looked at all different standards. What we came up with was, our recommendation was to use the Illuminated Engineering Society of North American Standards. With those standards, those have been adopted for street lighting by Seattle, Lincoln, Flagstaff, Asheville, North Carolina, Charleston, San Diego, just to name a few.
And the manufacturers are complying with those standards, correct?
Yes, yes, they are. And, and these standards are basically established because rather than, previously in North Little Rock, it just, street lights were put up at property lot lines, or just where it kind of made sense. But now that there are sophisticated computer models that you can have, you can actually forecast where you need to place them in the proper illumination.
So this doesn't have anything to do with any local issues that might be going around town currently, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Richard?
Ms. Kissinger, would Broadway, the new lights on Broadway be an example of following this model?
Yes, absolutely.
Any other questions? Let's get a motion to adopt on third and final.
I move.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Richard?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Richard?
Yes.